Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, and this is our 7:00 PM regular meeting. Please be advised that for anyone who needs them, there are assisted listening devices over on the table at the back of the room. And now, our city clerk will conduct the roll call. Okay, Councilmember Hoxsey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Mulcany.
Here.
And note for the record that Councilmembers G. and Councilmember Riley have an excused absence this evening.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is to adopt our agenda, item C. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Mayor and council members have a couple of items from the consent calendar that I need to remove from tonight's agenda. Item F3, requesting those be removed from the agenda. Should I take up F8 now or when we start talking about the consent? Okay. And then on F9, on that matter, which is a public hearing on the consent calendar, I'm requesting that we continue that matter to a date certain of November 18th. And if there are any members of the public here tonight wishing to speak on that item, that you would open the hearing, take public testimony, close the hearing, continue the hearing to that date certain.
Okay, so we're... And then, any other changes to the agenda?
I think that's plenty for the evening.
Okay, so then, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with items F3 and F5 removed from the agenda and F9 continued to a date certain, which is November 18th, with opening tonight for the?
I'd recommend, okay, adopt the agenda with F3 and F5 removed.
Okay.
And then, the other change, we can take up when we get to the consent calendar in case somebody is here to speak for that item.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Don't we need to remove F9 from the consent calendar as well?
So when we get to that portion of the agenda, we'll hear from any members of the public who'd like to speak on that item, and then it might, at that point, get removed for discussion.
Great. Okay, so, motion to approve the... Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with items F3 and F5 removed from the consent calendar?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoxsey and seconded by the Vice Mayor, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. We do have an item for the good of the city tonight. We have a proclamation declaring October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week. And Chief Isaacs is here to receive the proclamation and to make a few remarks. And so, Chief Isaacs, I wanted to give you a chance first to speak, and then I'll read parts of the proclamation, and we'd like to present it to you.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and thank you to the council members. We greatly appreciate the cooperation and the partnership we have with the city of Arinda and the city staff, and we look forward to continuing that to make our city safer. So again, thank you very much.
Did you want to say anything or introduce yourself? No?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, have you met our fire marshal? I can't remember if I introduced her to... This is our new fire marshal, Casey Irving.
What? Good evening, my name is Casey Irving. I'm the new fire marshal, and thank you for your partnership with Maraga Arinda Fire District. Well, thank you, and I think it's a partnership that has really strengthened over the last several years, and one, I think, that we all hold in high regard with a lot of mutual respect and collaboration. And, you know, it hasn't, I mean, the fact that we work so closely and have our MOFD and City of Arinda two by two, where we meet and really do a deep dive on issues of common interest and collaborate, I think, really our community benefits from. So, I want to thank you for your leadership, both of you. So, the October 5th through 11th is Fire Prevention Week, and the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, reminds us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fire in homes and communities. And so, I just want to read a few, a few whereas's from here. I won't go through the whole thing, but, whereas the city of Arinda is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living, visiting, and working in the community, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes now, and e-scooters, and even toys are powered by these batteries, and if they are misused, damaged, or improperly charged, they can overheat, start a fire, or explode. The National Fire Protection Association has reported an increase in these fires, underscoring the need for public education. And so, as our MOFD has explained to us, residents should follow three key calls to action. One, buy only listed products. Two, charge batteries safely. And three, recycle them responsibly, responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And the proper disposal and recycling is, helps prevent environmental concerns and hazards, and reduces fire risks. And so, we, I'm proclaiming that October 5th through 11th, 2025, is Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Arinda, and in doing that, we very much thank MOFD for all your information. And if folks do want to learn more about how to properly dispose of these batteries and maintain them, where can they go?
Very good question. They are free to call our office, and we will point them in the right direction and answer any questions that they may have.
And I believe you also sent out an email to those that subscribe to MOFD, because I know I got one, telling us what we need to do. So, thank you for that. Would any of the other council members want to say anything otherwise?
I'm pretty sure every week is Fire Prevention Week in Arinda. So, I appreciate that we focused on something that people actually don't hear every day. Really good words to the wise.
And welcome to you, our new fire marshal. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. So, we're just going to join you and present the proclamation. So stay right there, and I'll ask my council members.
Stand here, and I think we'll get a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is our only item for the good of the city tonight. So that brings us to public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council as part of public forum? I see no hands, and we have no speaker questions for public forum, correct? Okay, then we will close public forum. That brings us to our consent calendar. Item F, the consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And to remind folks, our consent calendar currently includes items F1, F2, F4, F6 through F10. So, keeping that in mind, are there amendments to the consent calendar?
Mayor and council members, I'd like to request that the council consider a small amendment to F8. When taking up the action to consider awarding the bid for the residential chipper program, if in part of your recommendation, you can give me some authority to make non-substantive changes to the agreement, I have a couple of things that I just need to clean up.
Okay, and since we had a couple public comments about that, can we go ahead and pull it from consent and take it up separately? Okay. And F9, we are also moving to continue. City Attorney, please help me with this process on this.
Correct. So, staff's recommendation this evening is that hear from any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, and then consider staff's recommendation to continue this public hearing to November 18, 2025. So, what I recommend is you vote on everything on the consent calendar other than F8 and F9, then vote on F9, ask staff if you have any questions, then, excuse me, F8 and then F9.
Great. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar, including only F1, F2, F4, F6, F7, and F10?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. I will now call item F8. I will note for the record that we did get two written public comments that have been provided to the council members that we both read for item F8. That item is award of bid for city's residential chipper program, and I will ask the city manager for her comments on this.
Sure. Honorable mayor, members of the council, this item before you this evening is basically an opportunity to renew the chipper program, which has been very successful in the community, very well received by community use. We, after last year's contract approval by the council, it was directed at that time that the city go out for an RFP for services, and we did that not once but twice upon thinking through the issues with, or using city equipment, liability issues, and we decided that we would be better served having a bid received that could be only for people providing those services and not using city trucks or chippers. And in doing so, we rebid the project, and the lowest responsive bidder for that is Wildland Corporation, the same provider of services currently. The cost for them to provide those services with their own equipment is substantially different than what it is to use our equipment, but when you take into account all the other factors that we also contribute to the cost of that service, the gas, the maintenance, the equipment itself, it is an increase, but it's not as substantial an increase as you see it on paper. With that, when we put out that RFP, we included specific language that should have made its way into the scope of work of the agreement. That's the language, and I'm hoping that you'll give me the authority to just add to the scope of work, which has to do with the additional requirements for the contract. And there was one other minor modification that we needed to make to the agreement language that talked about it being an hourly rate, when in fact, it's a daily rate. So I just need to make a couple minor modifications like that. Nothing substantial, it's all consistent with the RFP. In doing so, we want to maintain the level of service that we're currently receiving for the chipper program, and the budget reflects, the budget change reflects the need for additional funds in order to do that. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
And I'm sorry, just refresh my memory, please, on how many years this contract is for?
This contract is for, Nikki, help me out.
One, one year with two-year extensions. So, a total of, at the city manager's discretion, can, subject to budget appropriation, we could extend it for a total of three years.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can the costs go up every year?
I believe there's a CPI index cost included in that.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to open public comment on item F8. I do want to note for the record, we got two written public comments, and those have been received and reviewed. Are there any members of the public here who would like to make public comment on item F8? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on item F8 and bring it back to the council for discussion. Thank you, city manager, for addressing some of the comments, but, including some of the public feedback we got. I think that's appreciative.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, Mayor. Is there any provision in the contract for citizens to make a complaint if there is any sort of complaint with the services provided?
Certainly, residents, citizens can make complaints to the city. We, you know, as we deal with complaints, they come from contractors working on behalf. We also reach out to the contractor themselves to see if they can resolve those issues. Typically, we would provide the person complaining or concerned with the contact information for the contractor so that they can reach directly out to them as opposed to giving out someone's personal information.
Thank you. I mean, it's certainly a very used and valuable service, and I think I definitely want to see it continued. I would think our residents very much want to see it continued. Any other discussion, otherwise?
I guess I just wanted to share my thoughts with my fellow council members that, you know, I think like most laypeople, when you see the daily rate, it seems awfully high. I mean, the equipment isn't that sophisticated, the service isn't that sophisticated. So I have some questions, and I do feel like the service itself, there's, it's too important, and we've not seen processes the best we can do right now. And I really appreciate that the city manager is continuing to be ever vigilant about how to get the best price, value, and continue to offer that service to the public. So, that's why I was asking you about the term, is I feel like this isn't the best we can do. It's the best we can do for this year. And I also appreciate the comment about customer service, because with, you know, whether it's trash service or chipper service, people will have concerns and complaints, and it's nice to know that there's a vehicle.
Yeah, that is a good question. Thank you for that. Any other comments?
No, I think it's a valuable service. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the contract with the flexibility for our city manager to include the terms that she deems appropriate in the final contract.
Okay, and what we're being asked to give you is authority to make?
Minor modifications to the agreement.
Minor modifications.
To the agreement and scope of work. Okay, so, I will second that. And? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. That takes us to item F9 on our consent calendar, which is the public hearing for approval, not on our consent calendar anymore, we pulled it. Item F9, which is the public hearing for approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the California Public Finance Authority for the senior housing project located at 15 Irwin Way. And we have a new recommendation from staff now, which is?
And the recommendation is to continue this item to a date certain. That would be November 18th, for the public hearing to continue to that date. But at this time, if you have any speaker slips or wish to open the public hearing to address people who are here and wish to speak on that matter, this is the opportunity to do that.
Okay, so if there's no questions, then we'll go into public hearing, and so I'm going to call public hearing on item F9. So if there's anyone who would like to speak on item F9 today, now is the time to do so. And you would do that by coming up to the podium. Okay, hearing none. I will note, we got one public comment, written public comment on this item that has been given to the council members and reviewed. And I will then close public comment on item F9, and we, that brings it back to the council for us to, for a motion, right?
Motion, continue the hearing.
Do we have any discussion, or?
I'm interested to learn more about the issues at stake here, but it sounds like we've got the time between now and November for those to either be settled privately or for us to hear more about it when the time, when it comes back on substance. So, I'll move to continue to November 18th hearing.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously as well. And that takes us to our public hearing, item G, and?
We have to go back to items F3 and F5, which we pulled.
No, sir, they're removed for, they'll come back on another agenda.
I see.
They were just pulled completely from the agenda.
I got it. Thank you so much.
So they weren't pulled? Item H is policy matters. We have three policy matters tonight, and the first is H1, which is an update on the pilot off-leash dog area at Arinda Oaks Park and open space. And I think we have a staff report.
Honorable, honorable mayor and council members, Todd is handing out some information, which I'm assuming is some sort of map of the area, and he'll give a brief presentation about the success of the dog park.
Pilot program.
You guys get the file?
Thank you, Todd.
I think now we have.
Are you handing out what's on screen?
record, Todd Trimble, Director of Parks and Recreation. And we've, tonight, are ready to give you an update on the pilot off-leash program at Arinda Oaks. And I've got a little agenda here. We'll talk, we'll go through the background, talk a little bit about starting the pilot program, the feedback that we've received, and then talk about next steps. So, excuse me, moving right in. Okay, so, almost early last year, in March, first meeting in March, that's when you received a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, if you remember back that far, to consider developing a designated off-leash dog park in Arinda Oaks Park. That was an effort that had taken several months. The Parks and Recreation Commission assigned a task force to look at various areas in the city and narrowed down some other options and came back to you with a recommendation for Oaks Park. And, so, from there, that was, that was the item that, well, that was the start of that. So then, we moved a few months later into the summertime, you received a presentation on the initial design of the park up at Oaks Park, that had an entrance further up the meadow, required some pretty extensive work to get compliant pathways up that far. I think we were looking at it in the... I think we were looking at in the neighborhood of 775,000 for that. And that's where we left it at that time in July, just about a year, oops, excuse me, let me go back. Need to go back, sorry. Oops. Oh, man. There we go. All right. Sorry. Just about a year ago, first meeting in October, our architect calendar and associates presented a a different design of, at Oaks Park, modified the, the first design where the location or the entrance was moved further down in the vicinity of the picnic area. And then utilizing as a fenced area, potentially a portion or all of the meadow area and the picnic area potentially. So because we moved, because that entrance was moved, that negated the, the need for some of the extra construction costs to get the entrance up, a compliant entrance up, up further. That, that kept the price, well, pretty significantly down to around 400,000 or so. When we, at the end of that meeting, we, the council directed us to, to, to look into establishing a pilot program and moving forward from there and, and coming back soon with an idea for that. So just a month later, we did come back with an option for, I'm sorry, talking more about the specifics of the the pilot off-leash program. Again, revisited the, the less expensive option for Oaks Park and then wanted to formalize the pilot program that you directed staff to do and then come back after the following summer and, and give you an update on how, how that, how everything was, how everything went and then look, look from there. See if we can get feedback and have some direction moving forward. So we initiated the pilot program right after that meeting. We started looking into establish some rules, some specific rules for off-leash park. We looked at getting signs made. We really fortunately didn't have to do a, a lot of improvements to the area. If you're familiar with the park, it has restrooms, it has parking, it has the mutt, the poop bag dispensers, the water fountain, everything there. So we installed some signage. We used this flyer relatively widespread as we could. We had articles in the paper, we were in the outlook. Of course, in our activity guide, we posted those at, at other city field and school sites that, that had some off-leash dog activity issues and received, and they seemed helpful. We also appeared at the National Night Out and some other city events to try to really promote that, the idea that we did have this off-leash park preparing to open. We also had to modify, in addition to adding these signs at Oaks, we had to modify the existing signs, park rules signs that were there and remove the, the item that says, you know, dogs off-leash were not permitted. So can't forget to, we can't contradict ourselves there. So we moved forward. It opened in April to a pretty big response. I remember, I think we got about 40 responses or so to the survey in the first few weeks. We, if you had a chance to look at the, the feedback and the responses, we have about 185, a little bit more now, but when we copied those, we had about 185 responses. And I'll, we'll go through those real fast. You saw the variety of responses. I certainly can't put all of those here, but just kind of a quick summation of what people were saying. The 185 people, the first question, have you actually been there? Yes, that's good. So about 60%. It took a, a couple of months for that number to, the yes answer to exceed the no answer, but eventually it did. And so most of the people that responded indicated they had visited the park, some indicating that they visited on a regular basis. And then the second part of question one, where 113 people of the 185 replied, what else can you share about it? And that, that, you know, primarily positive, but a variety of different answers for that. That was the same with question number two. Kind of a adding on to that aspect, do you have any, what is the positive feedback you see? 137 people responded to that. There's a few samples of some of those answers. If you had a chance to look at, there were certainly a lot of longer answers and more detailed things. And certainly some people took, you know, took the time to respond a little more lengthy and a little more detailed. Question three, they talked, was the concerns, that was a really, a well-responded question, 154 people. If you notice, there was a variety, again, a variety of concerns, which we can understand. I would say the majority did, did involve or referred to in one form or another, the, the need for fencing or the lack of fencing. Question number four, what you're hearing about, if this location could be a solution moving forward for an off-leash park in the community. It's the overwhelmingly, the community felt that it could. And then finally, any other feedback that was kind of a hodgepodge variety of answers. Still mostly positive, leading to a really, what seemed to be an optimistic response overall. So we've certainly talked to some people at the location, people we've met at various other activities and, and events in the, through town who have, have expressed a lot of the same feedback. I've gotten individual emails from, from even neighbors in the park who, of the park who are, are in favor of it, who like it, like the proximity and so on. So I would think then overall, we could certainly talk more about the, the feedback, but that kind of is an update in general. I mentioned in the report, increase in, in costs were relatively minor. As you can understand, we already maintain the area on a regular basis, weekly basis, to check the trash, mow the lawn. The instances of having to refill the mutt mid dispenser went up and emptying the trash went up. And, but other than that, pretty, pretty status quo. So we can certainly expect that kind of level of, of maintenance moving forward if, if we continue this, whether we continue the, the pilot program for a while or, or something else.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Trimble. Any questions?
I have a couple. Okay, yeah. Do you know of any problems at the park? Have there been any reports of injuries or dogs getting lost or, I don't know, any other problems that have come to your attention?
No, other than, nothing that I've heard specifically. I've gotten a couple of comments directly about some areas of the park where sprinkler head may have been damaged, so that it's a little muddy. Or the, one of the more recent things we had up in that park for years, there was some, some sleeves, some PVC sleeves that were designed for, to insert volleyball net pulls into. Those aren't used anymore, but they're still out there. So we had staff find those and fill those in. That can be an issue. And other things like that, holes in the park, holes in the, in the lawn. So nothing, nothing beyond something like that that I can think of.
But you haven't heard of, you know, dogs getting lost or
No.
Dogs fighting or any problems?
Not that I've heard. I must tell you that the mult, I don't know how many times I've visited it between an opening and now, you know, dozens of times. And I've only, just a handful of times, and I'm going, you know, during the middle of the day typically, I haven't seen really anybody. So I know with the propensity of the responses regarding fencing, I'm sure there's a large amount of dog owners who have not taken the chance, you know, to go to an unfenced area. I know that I, I wouldn't take my two there, but have not, nothing like that has gotten back to me. I saw reports about how people found it from some of the postings we put at elementary school sites and different things. So that was encouraging, but I have a couple of Park and Rec commissioners who visit it relatively frequently and have seen other families there, but have not reported any, any issues.
If you were to fence it, how big an area were you considering fencing?
Well, we can, I have some, some shots or some, there's a, there's a shot of the park there. Probably one of the things that we had talked about and what the, I think the the alternative option showed, pretty much the fencing of the meadow or maybe just outside of the meadow area, maybe up to the, you see in the upper left, the old, what's called a patunk court up in that area. So I think that original option, the, the secondary option had about 500 and, you know, the, the original option had about 800 linear feet of fencing. And that would be about this amount that would, it would take to run the, run around the perimeter of the meadow and just kind of, just on the outskirts of it.
And the rough cost was around 400,000, is that what it was?
That was more than the fence. A fence is gonna be, we're told probably between 80 to $100 per foot. So if you're talking 800 feet maybe, so that's 80,000 for the fence. That original 400, not original, but the secondary option for 400 included, if you remember, I have a picture of that if you'd like to see, but it included some improvements to the, I'll come back to that one. These are just other shots if you haven't been up there. That was the first one. I don't think, you know what, I don't even have, that was the first one. So, but you see the, the, the red portion, the filled in portion? That's, that would be the, the area that's currently there, the decomposed granite pathway that is, is more less slope than the other area required. And then you see down below where the parking lot, one of the concepts was to enlarge the parking lot some. So that was included in the foreigner cost, some of the, some improvements and grading of the decomposed granite path was included. So if we don't do those aspects where, there will still need to be, we like, we believe some improvement of that DG path, but we wouldn't, but it wouldn't, we don't think it would be excessive at this point. We know we have to make it, you know, we have to make the access compliant to the entrance of the park.
But you could fence it for less than 400,000?
Fencing it for sure, absolutely. Less than, probably less than $100,000.
No, I, I'm sorry, I'm confused now because what, what we were presented before was two different, two different designs, right? And one was, that came, that penciled out to 775 was, was the, putting the dog park much higher?
Correct, right there, right?
And part of the, a big part of that cost was this path. Is that right?
The big part of the cost is the path section beyond the filled in red.
Right, right.
That would, that would be all new cement construction, landings, handrails and that, that sort. So that was
And this also included expanding the parking lot?
Ending the parking lot.
And then the 400, the 400 is for a fenced facility at the location that is lower in the meadow, right? So we're not expanding the path beyond what's in the red?
Correct.
And we're also not, are, with the 400, are we expanding the parking lot or not?
400 that they showed us did include the expanding of the parking lot and some of the work to the, the existing path. And then the fenced in area that's not shown very well here, but lower down, kind of going around the, the meadow.
Okay, and because, I just wanted to make sure that you had the benefit of that information, Councilmember Hoxsey.
And if you wouldn't mind switching yet, if you can sit on that graphic for a minute. Because, and just in the, in the spirit of filling in some of the context, it was, because it was my initiative at the time, when it came back only going down from 775 to 400, it felt way too expensive, given that we hadn't proven up demand. We didn't, you know, we'd, we'd actually, there was a whole iteration that Todd sort of touched on where we, we actually roughed it out at Wilder because Wilder had a really nice flat spot right at the entrance. And when the pickleball was going to be a million dollars, so well, shoot, let's put a dog park there and just build a fence. And even that came back at hundreds of thousands because there was a trench that created a problem. So with all of these, where the Parks and Rec sort of dog park location committee, this was sort of their A plan, the Wilder was coming in expensive. Our B plan here was expensive. And that was when we pivoted to say, well, let's just let people use it. Let's just change the use to being off-leash. We know there's no fence, but let's try to get some proof of interest, proof of demand, some feedback. And so this whole exercise was really, I don't think the 400 was particularly designed. It was just very big picture, rough estimate. And we're just now starting the process with where we left off because those costs were so high, they were kind of deal breakers before we got any further.
No, I understand. And I obviously wasn't part of the earlier discussions, but if you could, you know, do a fence for less than 100,000 and make it even a better dog park, that is appealing. But 400,000 seems like a lot for, I don't know. And we still don't really know exactly how many residents are using it, but it's, it's a nice feature to have for our city.
Okay, so actually I jumped into discussion too, but, and I think that context is really helpful and I hope it was.
Thank you.
But any more questions?
I have questions when, okay, but you had a few?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
I've lost my train of thought.
One thing in all the feedback, one of the initial concerns we had was that we were converting a people park to a dog park. Did any of the feedback you get say, I wish you would keep this as a people park?
There were some comments that I remember through, you know, however many hundred we have there in, in the survey monkey, that, that alluded to, you know, having gone and rented the picnic area or utilized the picnic area. Certainly a, a small, a very small percentage. In this example, you know, one of the options that we, we have potentially is not necessarily to maybe make the, the picnic area or continue utilizing the picnic area like we have in the past, which as you know, wasn't particularly lucrative. It was used a lot on a first come, first served basis. The private rentals which were available weren't, we used some, but not, certainly not extensively. Where we would have a potential, this is just an example, a potential entrance just coming up near the bottom of the meadow. Still want to make the, you know, allow access up and beyond the picnic area where that could potentially stay in place, probably not be utilized as a, as a reservable area or something like that, but still could be utilized. There was comments about how people would be, would use the tables and their dogs would kind of go back and forth. I think even somebody in here mentioned that they'd use the park that way and the dog didn't sit on the bench or the picnic table, dog runs off, comes back, you know. There was maybe a comment too about somebody, maybe there, there was a group sitting at a table and other dogs would kind of go up to them and see what they're eating and stuff, but.
I'm sorry, where's the picnic area on your diagram?
It's kind of in the circle there.
It's in the red circle?
Underneath the trees, yeah. If you can kind of see it, Councilmember, down, I kind of made, I highlighted like the, the the path that most people would utilize coming from that parking lot. And it goes up and make a U-turn and then kind of comes up. There's a stairway just kind of, as you come up the hill, you can kind of see an opening there just at the bottom of that circle. That's, so you could also take the stairway up and that takes you pretty much directly into the picnic area.
And the red is, if you were going to fence it, is it the red circle you're fencing or?
No, that would, that would, red circles indicates the, the existing picnic area. One idea for fencing would be the white area where you could have a smaller area kind of down low for small dogs and then, you know, more expansive area.
For the bigger dogs.
For the bigger dogs. You'd still need a double gated entry like all parks. You'd have a double gated down there that would have a double gated entry that would go in and then have access to both parks from that one spot. We even considered if you did that there, you could also potentially have another double gate up at the top there for people who have large dogs that are, just want to take the, the access road up or another, another set of stairs up and then could access directly from, from that side. Then this, that entrance would necessarily be compliant, but we would be providing compliance to the park at the lower ser, lower area.
Thank you.
Or compliant, compliant access in that lower area. That's about 800 square feet of fence. So that's probably $80,000, $60,000, $80,000 for just the fence.
And if you do that fence, do you have to do ADA compliance work or can you just do the fence?
We're required to get, have, have a compliant access only to the entrance of the park. So that would be going around the horseshoe. And if we have the entrance, I have a couple of shots where you can see a little bit better. We likely have the entrance kind of right there where the, where the highlighting kind of ends. The meadow, if you haven't been up there, as you go up the pathway and you, especially when you come towards the picnic area, the meadow slopes up pretty significantly. the meadow slopes up pretty significantly. So, you know, which is great for dogs, but maybe not so great for people. So down near where the high, just past the highlighted area per se, that's probably the, the least steep section. So you can do your entrance there. And we're required to make that compliant to that point. Um, the people that want to continue walk, you know, walking up the slope with their dogs, they can, um, or they could stay kind of near the vicinity of the entrance or, um, whatever they'd like to do.
Okay. My, the rest of my questions were forward looking about design and whatnot, which wasn't really in the staff report. Shall we continue with that or do you want to bring it up to discussion and then switch to those sort of next levels?
Have that as part of discussion. I just want to look, did our city manager want to add anything?
I just also wanted to add is, you know, in terms of funding, obviously the fence itself isn't an expensive piece. We did receive at least confirmation from the Rotary Club that they were interested in supporting up to
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand dollars. So if there was an interest in pursuing, you know, looking at fencing this and maybe looking later at parking lot improvements or other improvements, see how it goes, right? I mean, the investment is not terribly significant if you're just looking to fence in the area and provide that opportunity. And then we can really measure what utilization looks like, because at this point, I think there are people that are using it. I think we were out there today, there was a couple of guys sitting out in the picnic area and their dog was laying at their feet. And, you know, if the dog wanted to get up and run around, he would get up and run around. And then there was another lady walking on the trail who also decided to take a ball and throw her ball on the meadow while she, you know, headed, before she headed up the hill, right? So there's different types of users, um, a lot more passive users perhaps than if you had enclosed this area, you might get more activity out there. Uh, and maybe limit your, if you're thinking about it, limit your investment to maybe fencing right now, see how it goes. And then if it's something that you want to invest more in long-term, you could do that.
Thank you. Um, there's nothing else. I'll open public comment.
There's nothing further for the staff questions. Thank you.
Public comment on item H one. Seeing none, and there's no speaker cards, I will close public comment on item H one and bring it back to the council for discussion. Vice Mayor, you had some thoughts?
I just, um, Councilmember Hoxsey, I thought started with just the right tone, which is, um, I, I love these answers of let's do the least possible so that we just fence it, right? Because when you hear like, oh, it's a great dog park, let's fence it. And then the number goes straight to four hundred thousand. It feels wasteful and irresponsible. And so a lot of this incremental approach feels, like the way we should have been doing it from the start. And so I really, I like the fact that we've proven up demand. I really like what I'm seeing on this slide. Uh, the, the red path in the earlier, even when you said like, if we don't go all the way up, we only go to the red mark. This yellow path is still another thirty, forty percent less actual, you know, hardscape, you know, whether it's DG or paving, that's better. The fenced area is bigger. Um, so to me, this slide right here feels like a really, really good start. Um, and even, because I, I do go there several times a week, um, it's quite easy to get to the, the walking path, that little trail you see on the left goes, you know, all the way up to the Donald Drive area. You really don't need to exit through the dog park. It's quite easy to just go from the front gate, uh, if we don't want to do anything more than the minimum necessary. So, um, I, I would love to see a serious, you know, designer proposal, a proposal that's ready to actually get costed out. Um, or even to go to some rough costs if we can, um, because this feels like the, the perfect next step.
I, I'm totally in favor of looking at doing the fencing and seeing what we do next. I think that sounds like it's responding to sort of the desires of the people using the park in order to, it would, you know, probably increase usage, which would be great.
Okay. So, so I'm just going to, um, our staff report and the next steps and the, and staff is recommending, so we're in terms of continuing the pilot program, I think there's absolute consensus, we want to do that, correct?
Yeah.
But we also are being asked whether we want to refer the matter to the Parks and Rec Commission for a recommendation for future off-leash use. And I would favor doing that. In terms of feedback, I, I would like to see it happen in stages as well, but I do think that the, I appreciate that we did it as a pilot project, but it does seem like the, the desire and the appreciation of the community is there for this amenity. And so at this point, I do feel like it would be responsible to make an allocation, especially if we were getting some matching funds from the Rotary, which does so much for our community. But if we were able to, you know, show a contribution from the city as well as that and, you know, I would like to make sure that we include, you know, the signage, the dog waste bags, the general service and maintenance and, you know, um, the, in addition to the fencing. So if the, if that takes the cost of four hundred or somewhere near that, I am comfortable with that in terms of personally, but I also would like to see more information on that. So.
Would love to, um, reiterate from what you just said is I don't want it to go back to another commission for further study, which is sort of how the staff report read. I think what, uh, what I would love to see is we've got an earmark in the budget. Let's act on this first phase. Um, like, let's, let's have this go back as an action item, not a study item. Um, if that's what you were saying, I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, yeah. But I very much appreciate the clarification. So the action item, but, but for clarity, would the action item be going back to the Parks and Rec Commission for an action item recommendation? Or are we saying we just want a recommendation now on how we do it? And what is-
City Manager, could you help us out? But well, I mean,
you could just take an action tonight and say you want to move forward with this as proposed and maybe not remand it back to Parks Commission for any more input. Or you could give it back to them with the council's recommendation to enclose the area uh, as shown on screen with some refinement. Uh, and get feedback from them on what you would like to see happen, see if they have any other perspectives about it. But that's entirely up to you. I mean, you, you're the council, you can make these decisions and you don't have to send something back to a commission for more input. They've given you input previously.
I feel ready to take what's on this slide and to have that get, um, priced out and brought back to us, uh, as a direct action item. And obviously the, the Parks and Rec Commission is there as a resource, but I, I don't feel that it needs to go back for further study. I feel like their input already has been terrific.
I agree. I agree with that. Okay. So that's good direction. Um, I think we'll be involving the city engineer and maybe some of the, because this is so simplistic, maybe not necessarily engaging in a contract for services with one of our landscape architecture firms and maybe looking at this as what we can do in-house.
Great. That would be wonderful.
So I-
Do you need a vote or, um? I'm sorry? It's, you provided direction. So we'll be back, we'll be back and we'll, we'll bring this back as potentially an in-house project.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for all the feedback. And I love that this is an idea that the Vice Mayor had a few, a few years ago, right? That is now turning into a reality. So thank you for that. Okay, that takes us to item H two, um, which is filling in the vacancy on the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And we are being asked to consider the appointment of, um, Craig Beckerman to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee or to provide direction.
Just councilmembers, as the staff report says that we currently have a vacancy on our T-S, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And tonight, we do have one applicant after I, um, posted the required notices and worked on a recruitment from, um, a gentleman named Craig Beckerman. Um, so the council tonight could choose to either appoint him at this meeting based upon his statement of interest, direct staff to arrange an interview with the mayor, council subcommittee, or the full council, or three to continue their recruitment efforts. And so I'm looking for your direction tonight.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I just want to disclose a, um, a potential conflict, uh, that I was neighbors with this candidate, uh, but only until 2014. And, um, I double checked and because there was no financial interest at any point, um, I'm comfortable, but I just wanted to disclose that on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, he seems like a candidate who has qualifications to do the job and-
I just want to like, just to, first of all, questions, any questions? Okay, then I'm going to call public comment on item H two. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Hoxsey, please.
I mean, just from his statement of interest, he seems like a candidate who has, um, you know, recently retired and has experience in these areas in his prior work experience. And so, since he's the only candidate, I would be in favor of appointing him unless you would like to meet him first, which I totally understand.
Obviously don't need to meet him, but, um, I have nothing but wonderful things to say. I think he would be a, a really value-add candidate.
Well, based on the application, I was prepared to appoint him. So I would like to, unless there's any more discussion, no? Then I would like to, um, move. Is it, is it, it's a motion, right, to appoint Craig Beckerman to the TSEC?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, City Clerk, for your efforts on that.
And then, uh, the next item, as you know, that, um, the League of California Cities has their annual meeting uh, starting tomorrow through Friday. And at this meeting, there's a, uh, time when they have an annual business meeting, um, where the league membership considers and acts on resolutions to establish league policy. So this year, um, both Mayor Malkani and Councilmember Hoxsey are, uh, registered to attend. And so you may wish to consider them as a delegate and alternate to, at the business meeting.
Okay. And so any questions on item H three for our city clerk? Thank you for the report. I will call public comment on item H three. Seeing no public comment, I will close that and bring it back for discussion.
As the only non-delegate, I would like to fully support the nomination of Councilmember Hoxsey and Mayor Malkani. As I can't think of any other way. And so I feel really confident nominated the two of you as our voting delegates.
I think Mayor Malkani should be our voting delegate and I should be the alternate, unless you can't be there in the morning when they're voting.
And since we're-
What?
I think we will both be there, so hopefully, uh, it goes well. So, uh, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. And, uh, with the clarification by Councilmember Hoxsey, we will need one of the involved parties to second.
I'll second, that's fine.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay.
Hearing none, that also passes unanimously. That concludes our policy matters. Do we have any council member reports?
It feels like it's been a short time since our last meeting.
We met last week, so yes, um, I'm trying to think if there's any council member reports in the last week.
Mayor, did you want to provide a report on our meeting with Sue Noack?
Yes, I did. We, thank you. I was looking at my calendar, what did? So, um, the city manager and I met with Sue Noack, the head of MTC, together with representatives, council members and, um, staff from Walnut Creek and Lafayette and expressed concern at the TOC guidelines and that it, compliance with them would be virtually impossible for Arinda. And that, you know, there were, it's, it was very frustrating for local jurisdictions that were genuinely trying to move forward and have moved forward with our housing elements than to have this conflicting information, um, that was, you know, at odds sometimes with our housing element. And, you know, made sense for certain jurisdictions, but not for ours and did not take into account frankly, climate change in a way, even though part of what it's trying to do is reduce emissions. It doesn't take into account climate change because it does, fully, because it doesn't look at, uh, take into account wildfire zones at all. And, um, what else would you like to add to that? Have a nice card.
I think one of the things that we learned from that meeting is that it sounds like since this was originally introduced back in two thousand and eighteen, the board of MTC has turned over in, in the last two years, more than half the board is new. And so Sue was explaining that she's hearing it not only from member agencies, but also from jurisdiction, uh, representatives. They're, they're also concerned. So they've been trying to work with the staff at MTC about maybe taking a different approach for the TOC policy and perhaps making it less punitive and more incentive-based. And that they're looking at their options now and then they'll be looking to propose those options at a future meeting. Uh, but that no means is they're going to need to be compliant by the end of this year. I don't think that they're going to be ready for that. So there'll be some opportunity for more input and it sounds like um, most of the jurisdictions have made their voices heard and with the MTC board that they're concerned about how to comply, what it means to comply. And, um, taking a punitive approach versus maybe looking more at as an incentive-based approach to, you know, working on TOC uh, activities. So I think that's generally a summary of the meeting. Um, very happy to have other people at the table with us expressing the same concerns that we also raised.
Yeah, strongly too. I mean, folks, we're really, we are definitely not alone in our, um, you know, recognition of all the inconsistencies, um, and, um, check the box sort of approach of the current guidelines as opposed to that is, you know, punitive in nature, right? That could be aspirational. It could simply be a vision. With the obligatory aspect already being the state housing laws, right, in our housing element. So.
Were, were they receptive? Was she receptive to the comments? I think that there was a lot of feedback that they've already received around that. And that's what she shared with us. And so that they're, they're looking at opportunities to refine the program.
That's good.
If I can just build on that, I had forgotten, I went to a SWAT meeting yesterday, um, and it was just very relevant because they were talking about, you know, all of the planning that they're doing for the, all the future projects. And they've got, you know, sort of a scoring system of, of need and things that can be improved, but also soft things like, you know, equity and, and other goals and objectives. Um, and it was very clear that all of La Mirinda was a, just a black hole on their planning. And so, you know, this idea that transit dollars follow where we're able to, you know, create mobility hubs and create additional access. Seeing that the SWAT data analysis basically said that we don't have the geography and the urbanization that can serve those goals in the five to 10-year planning horizon. It helps to understand that the TOC policy isn't going to punish us for something that on a data basis is just not ripe at this time. So, uh, these are sort of compatible conversations. And I'm happy to hear that they're recognizing, put the dollars where the help can go. So.
They're hearing it. I don't know that it's recognized. But it's, but thank you. I think that's a really-
It just relates to where the dollars are going to go.
Relevant connection to be making, right? But, so. Any other council member report? The one thing I did share this with our city manager and with our city attorney, but the one thing I want to share at the mayor's conference is the mayor, it was in Martinez, and the mayor from Martinez, mentioned that they had, they had an ordinance that they were calling vacant to vibrant. Right? And so I got very excited because we hear a lot from our residents about vacancies, but um, it's just something that I look forward to keeping an eye on, that we all probably just want to watch and see what happens with it. And we heard from our, um, our city, uh, I mean, our county recorder at the mayor's conference as well, about the upcoming special election for Prop fifty. And she just urged all of us to help get the word out. And because a lot of people don't know that there is an election, so it was just about letting people know. And that's all we have, city manager.
Oh, great. Uh, just a couple of quick updates. Uh, this October twenty-third will be trunk or treat and we're still accepting reservations for families and children to join us for that event, which is becoming more and more popular. On November sixth at five thirty, the Light Up Arinda event will take place and it will be here at the Library Plaza, is my understanding. Um, we're going to be working to support that effort this year as a co-sponsor. to support that effort this year as a co-sponsor. The extension of Light Up Arinda will be fairly significant this year. So we're going to see a lot more areas of the community glow this holiday season. And then just on the front of legislative updates, SB 707 was signed in by the governor, which is the Brown Act measures. And staff, we've been talking about how to potentially implement that. We have some time. So, but we'll, maybe at some point, we'll give you a more detailed report about what it all entails, because there's some, there's some aspects that we might need to get feedback on from the council.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any, that brings us to matters initiated, item K on our agenda. Are there any matters initiated tonight? Hearing none, the, we will adjourn our meeting and the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.